The agenda review session will begin now, followed immediately by the city council meeting of July 16th, 2025. We have approval of minutes, report of correspondence. We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one is an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick, New Redmond II redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Number two is an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 17 zoning in regards to several proposed amendments from the master plan reexamination report. And number three is an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Chapter 1016 Stopping Standing or Parking Section 1016050 Schedule 29 Time Limit Parking in regards to George Street, Handy Street, Jones Avenue, and Sedam Street. Ordinance is on first reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Chapter 1020 Handicap Parking Section 1020010 Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons Adding 286 Comstock Street to Laurel Place and Hale Street, which is actually 128 Joyce Kilmer Avenue. We have resolutions 1 to 26, except for 22 has been pulled. Number one is approval of agenda amendments. Number two is approved payroll. Three is authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four is approved amendment of resolution R.062559 in regards to modifying the sponsorship requested by the New Brunswick City Market. Five, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Prevent Child Abuse New Jersey for Buglo Park. Number six, approval of contract with Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company Incorporated for sanitary sewer pump station maintenance. Number seven is approved amendment of resolution R.072459 to extend the contract for one additional year with Actisure New Jersey Partners Insurance Services LLC doing business as Doyle Alliance Group. Number eight is approval of authorization to rebid for mechanical, electrical maintenance and emergency repair work at the water treatment plant and pump station. Number nine is approved payment for emergency procurement for fire headquarters for sanitary piping work and concrete work at the fire headquarters. Number 10 is approved request for street closing and use of city sidewalk by the ruptures Robert Wood Johnson Medical School for a ceremony to celebrate the incoming class of medical students and present them with their first white coats. Number 11 is approved request for use of city property and street closure requested by the New Brunswick Fire Department and the Vulcan Pioneers for National Night Out for Recreation Park. Number 12 is approved request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Fire Department in Los Bombieras for National Night Out, which is the Joyce Kilmer Park. Number 13, approval of order of contract with South and Associates LLC for proprietary contract for consulting services for the police department. Number 14 is a resolution to approve UEZ Clean Team contract with the New Brunswick Parking Authority for 2526. Number 15 is approval order of contract with Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners LLC for engineering and landscaping architectural design for Joyce Kilmer and Joyce Kilmer Park renovations. Number 16 is approved amendment of resolution R.04542521, a change order number one with Pax Mundus Enterprise Incorporated for fabricate and install roof access ladders at the public library. Seventeen, authorized application and execution of grant agreement, 2026 Transportation Trust Fund Program with New Jersey Department of Transportation. Eighteen, approval order of contract for Roberts Engineering Group LLC for engineering services for Lee Avenue, Welton Street, Harvey Street Water Main Upgrade Project Phase One and Phase Two. Nineteen is authorized tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. Twenty, authorized tax collector to cancel certificate number 2100442 Block 10 Lot 101 170 Nielsen Street and refund the lien holder. Twenty-one, approved agreement with AKA Cameo LLC. Twenty-two has been pulled. Twenty-three, resolution authorizing the city to accept and implement the this year's Neighborhood Preservation Program Grant with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Twenty-four is approved authorization to advertise for miscellaneous concrete replacement work at various parks. Twenty-five, approved amendment of resolution R.032523 Change Order Number One with Halicon Incorporated for Buglo Park and Alice Jennings Archer Ball Park for sports courts renovation. And number twenty-six is a resolution to approve the Clean Team Contract with the New Brunswick Parking Authority for 2526 for Clean Team Services in the downtown area and the rest of the Special Improvement District. We have items for discussion by council, and the next council meeting and agenda review is August 6th. And we'll call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins is absent. Councilmember Socor Ludwig is absent. Council Vice President Castaneda?
Here.
Council President Anderson?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been applied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed, the city clerk has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in City Hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the home news. Would you please grant any pleasurable leagence if you're able?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, our moment of silence for our military, men and women stationed here and around the world, trying to keep peace. Thank you. We have approval of minutes.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Deputy clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments and correspondence?
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office have been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have ordinance for second reading. Number one is an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick, New Redmond II redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Mr. Dominguez, can you give us a rundown of what's happening?
Certainly, Council President, thank you. As you may recall, last fall, we adopted the New Redmond II redevelopment plan, which replaced functionally, although we deleted that plan for the New Redmond redevelopment plan that was adopted about 15, 20 years ago. The plan was originally for the development of two office buildings on the site of the MK lot on Redmond New Street and Joyce Kilmer and over there. And now we've made some tweaks. We've modified the eligible parcels from a broad scope of parcels that included the previous redevelopment plan and narrowed it down to just that block. We've got to include some stuff across the street. But we also added the Mayfair lot and the building that was formerly the County Interior Office, as is envisioned for that to become a new parking deck. And so, as part of that process, the project now looks to be a two office buildings and a parking deck. They have relation to each other. There's also some tweaks in terms of consideration of building coverage and previous coverage and floor area that the whole site will share the numbers. So if one building is smaller, allows the other building to be a little bit bigger, rather than force every building into a smaller narrow box. And basically, those are some kind of high level changes regarding the plan.
Thank you very much. Do your my fellow council members have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Okay, we're preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak to this ordinance, please approach the council by way of the microphone. If you would please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, council. I'm Charlie Cradaville, 143 Sedam. It was said by the planning director, quote, "It is envisioned for that to be a parking deck." My question is, who is envisioning it to be a parking deck and why?
Mr. Dominguez.
I had conversations with the Parking Authority, and it's been intended, the City and the Parking Authority, to convert that site into a parking deck, as far as my, based on my conversations.
Has the Parking Authority Board taken any action towards that end?
No.
I mean, have they, have they, here's what I'm getting at, who's going to pay for it?
Has the Parking Authority done anything about that? Mr. Dominguez.
I think that this is, at this point, the, what that's going to look like in terms of financing and size and whatnot is still being fleshed out. I can't speak to anything, any action of the Parking Authority Board, or how and what mechanism is going to be paid for or constructed. The plan incorporates it as a critical piece, but it's not necessary to the full development of the plan. And there's a lot of latitude in the way that the plan addresses the parking deck in order to give the Parking Authority as much latitude as they need to build the deck that they think is appropriate and is to be built there.
A little early, I think.
Yeah, so to that point, if it's not necessary for it to be in the plan, I would respectfully request that the city council strike it from the plan. It would be a mistake to give the Parking Authority carte blanche to do whatever they want with this site. They may own it, but we have to ask ourselves what's in the best interest of the city, of the residents, not the Parking Authority. And especially if it's a half-baked plan that the Parking Authority hasn't even taken action to pursue at this time, I don't see why the city should set this land aside and say, "We envision it as a parking deck," when there's so much more that we need in New Brunswick. I think we have a lot of parking decks, and I don't think building another one across the street from a 1,450 space parking deck is really the type of development that people want to see in New Brunswick. Can I ask, how many spaces will the deck be? Might it be bigger than 1,400? Or is there any parameters on the size of the parking deck? Could it be bigger than 1,400?
I don't believe we have any numbers at this time.
Okay, so respectfully, without specifics on who's going to pay for it, without specifics on what size it's going to be, and without any controls to make sure that it's not something we ultimately don't want, this unnecessary piece of the proposal should be struck. Can I ask any of the councilors, would anybody on the council be willing to make a motion to strike that from the plan?
I don't hear any.
Okay, well, it's unfortunate because, you know, if the Parking Authority hasn't said how they're going to pay for it, or who's going to pay for it, that means we're going to pay for it. And I don't want to pay for another parking deck, respectfully. I think you're making a mistake. If you include it, you should strike it. I'd also like to ask about the office buildings. This was originally envisioned as a Middlesex County office building, where the county would be renting all or most of the structure. Is that still the plan? Is the county involved? Why are we, you know, what's prompting us to build these buildings? Is the county going to be involved?
Mr. Dominguez.
My understanding is the county's probably going to do the first building, but that's just because I keep hearing it at meetings like this one from people like Mr. Cradaville. But I've, no one's ever told me the county's using the first building or they're using the second building. That's never been something that's been built, so I can't say that conclusively.
And for the record, I'm happy to be a go-between because I attend the other meetings, like the Parking Authority and the Middlesex County meetings, where I do ask about these things. And I think it's important that there be more coordination, especially if it's for a government function. If it's going to be a new county building, that should be in the plan. We should make sure that it's actually serving the needs of the residents instead of the needs of the developer. And I feel like throughout every version of the New Redmond redevelopment plan, it has been in direct response to a developer requesting a specific project, not framework for what the city needs or wants, and then let developers apply to build within the framework. It's always been, at first it was the folks who came in and said, "We're going to build a giant hotel and tons of housing and a supermarket," and they never did a thing. That was 2007, 2008. That's when the plan first started. Now the site has been mostly cleared. AST says, "We want to build two buildings." City steps in and says, "Okay, well, what exactly do you want in the buildings? We'll make it happen," instead of saying, "Well, what do we want? What do the residents want?" And I encourage you to hold off on this plan, especially the parking component. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have number two is an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 17 zoning in regards to several proposed amendments from the master plan reexamination report. Mr. Dominguez, can you give us a rundown?
Thank you, Council President. So, quick rundown of the highlights of the changes. There's a lot of sections in there, a lot of it's striking old stuff to make room for new sections. So, one item is the reconsolidation of the Commercial District of Leeson Avenue to one zone for three zones. One item is the expansion of the downtown Commercial District Zone up to approximately Hamilton Street. There are additional permitted uses for the downtown zone based on market demands, modifications to the industrial zone, uses that are permitted broadly speaking. In those cases, clarification of what's permitted there, not necessarily new things per se, as well as allowing restaurants and cannabis, which are conditional uses in those areas, to be permitted, uses of the right. There is, I think, one of the more important impactful, hopefully, provisions to the change is adaptive reuse code applicable to Leeson Avenue to hopefully salvage some of the architectural interestingness of the corridor by salvaging buildings and allowing them to be converted into multifamily buildings without having to get torn down and built with brand-new blocks, multifamily buildings whenever possible. And in some other cases, we've eliminated all of the overlay zones in the city, and we've condensed them into conditional and permitted uses throughout the area, like, for example, by College Avenue. We had College Avenue overlay district. It was a little clunky in the way that it wasn't overlay district, so we've put it in as subsumed into the underlying zoning districts over there. We moved cannabis stuff from overlay into, and we subsumed it into the zoning districts from which they were applicable. And that's kind of the highlight pretty much of the ordinance amendment.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow council candidates or members have questions or comments? Okay, we're preparing to open this one up to the public. Again, for this ordinance only, up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by coming to the microphone and giving your name and address for the record. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have number three is an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Chapter 1016 Stopping Standing or Parking Section 1016050 Schedule 29 Time Limit Parking in regards to George Street, Handy Street, Jones Avenue, and Sedam Street. Any of my fellow council members have any questions on this ordinance? Okay, we're preparing to open it up, but this ordinance only, up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the microphone. You have up to five minutes. Please give your name and address just for the record. We appreciate it.
And seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading, and ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles in Traffic Chapter 1020 Handicap Parking Section 1020010 Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons Adding 286 Comstock Street to Laurel Place and Hale Street, 128 Joyce Kilmer Avenue is the correct address.
I move the ordinance sitting down over 6:2025 by 5:00 p.m. Same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have resolutions 1 to 26, except for 22. Any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments about any of the resolutions at this time?
Okay, at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting up to the public on the resolutions only. Again, you have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions, would you please approach the council by way of the microphone, give your name and address for the record? And if you could, we'd appreciate the item number.
Good evening once again, Charlie Cradaville, page two, at the bottom, item number nine. This is emergency procurement for fire headquarters. Can you please explain what the emergency is and how it's being addressed?
George, Mr. Ossoff.
Sure, so I'll go first and then we'll definitely fill in the details. The, there was a matter that needed to be handled quickly in terms of the firehouse. Some of it had to do with the plumbing leaking, and so the city took action to solve the problems as quick as possible, and this is the bill coming forward to be taken.
Anything else, Deputy?
Sure, so we had some emergency work through our subcom system. We had a clot in the line, which wasn't letting us get the ground wire out, so that had to be addressed immediately, as well as floor scanning. We had an independent company come out and scan the floor, the concrete floor, to identify where the actual steel was at.
Okay, so it sounds like a water intrusion problem. Is that why the fire engines are parked outside? Is it not safe to park them in the building?
I don't believe that's not the case, but.
So the, the weight of the apparatus, as, as fire engines get heavier and apparatuses are providing more and more fire protection, we're evaluating the floor's ability to maintain the apparatus.
Okay, so it sounds like, yes, that's why the engines are parked outside?
I think it's more precaution.
Right.
Yeah, here and there, but obviously at night they're inside.
Right.
A lot of times.
No, they're not outside.
They're not outside.
But it's precaution at this point.
Understood.
It's a safety concern.
Totally, yeah, no, I, I get it. I guess, you know, bigger picture, it's a very old building, and you can either continue to pay for repairs to it, or the city can do what I think you should do and get a new fire headquarters. I know that in 2014, the city announced that it was going to pursue that on Sedam Street and was, you know, we, we, back when we used to receive press releases from the city, we received a press release saying, "Y'all were going to do that." Is there any update on, on that plan to replace the building altogether with a new, modern fire headquarters, so we won't have these kind of problems?
I believe it's an ongoing investigation and questioning.
Council President, I'd be glad to say they have a little more to that. Mr. Cradaville is right, the city is actively seeking the building of the new fire headquarters. The building that we currently have is at the end of life. It's citing a new public safety building is probably one of the more difficult buildings to build with government. And we are well underway with architects and engineers to that plan, so more to come, but it's, thankfully, the fire department administration is probably one of the main things that we're working on daily basis is getting that headquarters built, so.
Good to hear it. I think we should move in that direction, and to that end, I would hope to hear updates in the future on this, since, you know, I attend almost every meeting, I don't think this has come up in these settings, but I would love to have the fire director here and be able to talk about the work that they're doing, the site that they're choosing, what they envision for a future fire headquarters, and how we're going to pay for it, all transparent and out here in these meetings, because that's really the place it should be discussed. And I appreciate you answering my questions today, and yeah, I'm sorry to hear about the situation there, but I'm glad that folks are on top of it. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, I guess, Daniel Moore, really, I wasn't even, I didn't pick up the resolutions and even look into this, but due to where my matters will be, I will be speaking on the fire department tonight, due to where, I'm glad that you feel that, due to where, this is an extreme emergency, which I'm not saying that, understanding correctly, due to where, wow, this is about water, but when I get to the public comment, due to where, wow, you didn't think that, what, my situation regards to electrical wires burning, due to where, what, and a serious situation. But like I said, that's really my comment on, on that. I will continue with this matter till when I do get to the public comment.
Thank you.
Hi, April LaClaus, 143 Sedam Streets. I just would love more information on number 23 on the agenda, the Neighborhood Preservation Program Grant, just any information available on what that grant funding would be going towards, what kind of programs there would be if that grant were accepted.
Mr. Dominguez?
If, if you may repeat that, everybody's turning their pages.
23.
Just any, any more detail on what we would be, what the city would be doing with those funds?
So, so this is an ongoing project with Esperanza, where we sort of act as a pass group with a five-year Neighborhood Preservation Program Grant. They use it to fund support for businesses in terms of, I think, the side improvements, in terms of software help, they run events in the neighborhood, they run their own little mini clean team kind of thing, they keep, I think they spend time and money on keeping the sanctuaries in the neighborhood maintained and beautified. That's sort of like a high-level thing, but if the lady wishes, you can email me and I'll send her a copy of the plan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, can I ask questions here too, rather than just like?
Only on the resolution.
Yes, it's about the clean team.
Give your, give your name and address just for the record.
Daphne, I have two residences, one in Highland Park HP, across the river, with my family, and the other one in Mercer County.
Okay.
Okay. And I actually have put in an application.
Yes, I gave it to the.
Oh, it's in view?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, my eyes are a little bit blurry sometimes, okay. So about the clean team, I just wanted to know, like, could you just elaborate on that and how it works, like, who sets it up and stuff like that, who's in charge of it, and who is a part of the clean team, and general age range as well? Thank you.
Are we talking about 26, item 26?
What?
25, 26.
The clean team, resolution 14, I think, I don't know.
14, okay. Mr. Dominguez?
It's 14 and 26 are both clean team related. So, clean contracts with the New Brunswick Parking Authority who runs the clean team for us, and they hire their own staff, their regular staff, it's not sort of a volunteer organization, they're regular full-time, or our kind of employees, and that's it, and we fund the service.
Okay.
And the, and the age range generally?
I'm not sure.
My shirt's a little bit in the theme of the clean team, a little bit.
Well, this is, they don't pick up litter and remove remedial stuff from the streets. They don't do any planting or anything like that. It's just pick up trash.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think there's an age range, but you have to, it's a job you have.
I'm not that gung-ho about nature necessarily, but I mean, clean teams, I'm just putting them in, planting a little bit.
No, nothing like that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes, with the exception of 23, we're absent.
Duly noted. Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have items for discussion by council. First, I want to congratulate and wish Ms. Lori McCann from Purchasing, who's retired, and thank her for all her years of service here. We also have some things from last time. Mr. Drewless, would you talk to those things that we talked about last time, at the last council meeting?
Sure. Council President, member of the council, members of the council, regarding the intersection of Sedam and Lee Avenue, the city's traffic commission is expecting to receive a report, a report from the traffic engineers within the next two weeks. That report will trigger them to meet earlier than their scheduled September meeting. So, if all goes to plan, the special meeting in August, and then be able to act appropriately based on the reports outcomes. As it relates to unpaid workers' compensation payments, all workers' compensation payments are current, and employees with concerns regarding these payments should contact, any employee benefit should contact the personnel division at 732-745-5008, of course, my office, 732-745-5007. As it relates. As it relates to the Middlesex County Joint Insurance Fund, it's a lot of questions back and forth, this is an update. On July 15th, the, the JIF met, MCM JIF met, the commissioners approved a preliminary dissolution plan. The plan will be transmitted to Department Banking Insurance and the public with an opportunity to view it and speak on it in a public hearing on August 19th. It is true, there are no active members left in the Middlesex JIF, and the fund will remain in a runout state, which will maintain and pay the claims for folks from 2024 and back. There were some questions regarding Code Red, since, as of July 9th, there were nine occurrences of Code Red, and it serviced 37 participants. And as it relates to 100 Jersey Avenue, the city is continuing to work on supporting that redevelopment project into affordable housing that comes along with it. There was a, one of the partners did have a financial issue, and it's working with the remaining partners to move the project forward. I did provide a statistic of 124 affordable housing units that are currently under construction. Just to give more information, there are 53 units that will come online when the destruction is complete at Sterling Side, which is 50 Nielsen, 65 units at Hillburn Commons, Hoppin Village, 75 Nielsen, and six units from Coming Home, 293 Townsend. In addition, I'd like to add, there's 11 Spring Street will be breaking ground this summer with 60 additional affordable housing units, and just recently, the planning board approved an application for 90 Baker Street for 67 affordable units.
Thank you. With the question after the Environmental Commission, we certainly encourage the Environmental Commission to send away their letters to whatever resolution they would like to do, and we encourage that. Personally, I like it, I just don't like the city council getting involved in a lot of resolutions for federal, state, and things like that, so that's one of the things, and we still haven't come to a consensus for that resolution. Mr. Shami, can you explain a little bit?
Well, Council President, members of council, just so the public is clear, when you state that there's no consensus, what you're telling the public is, there's no consensus amongst the council members to bring that particular item onto the agenda for vote. So, I think they need to understand that if there's not a consensus to bring it to the agenda, there's probably not a consensus to pass it. So, that is really the end of the story, in my mind, and I know people have been asking about it. I will say for the record, it has been the practice of this council not to get involved in state, federal, some other municipal business when it comes to legislation, and I know the council has, has taken that position of a hands-off, if you will, but certainly, as the council president stated, the Environmental Commission is, is free to do what they do.
Any council members have anything they need to say? Okay, we're preparing to open the meeting for the public comment. Again, you have up to five minutes, up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public wish to speak during this public comment portion of the meeting, please approach the council by way of the microphone, and give your name and address for the general, for the record, and you may start.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore. Of course, I'd like to, I, I really like to comment, starting off with Byard Street, due to where, like I said, some of you may not believe me when I say I can see things in advance, I do have special vision regards to, due to where, yes, and honestly, the workers that are building right across from, I believe it's 110 Byard Street, due to where, wow, did they see me staring at the building, noticing something wrong with these, with the homeless, putting all these blankets and everything along, along the gate over there, but wow, did I really feel comfortable in calling the fire department to, to, to really warn them what, what I was really seeing, and honestly, I have to say, sad to say, no, I didn't, due to where, wow, after five times, I've called the fire department to my house, ooh, having the situation with few, few fumes, just because, wow, it did not measure on what your machines were saying, that, wow, how you make it look like I'm just going through any types of fumes, due to where you have people putting it, putting fumes all over, coming next to me wearing high cologne, du, due to where you're putting in this, in, in, in their air conditioners, like I said, it's not, few, a few fumes, perfumes, like I was just smelling anything, but to get to the bottom line, July 25th, excuse me, June 25th, due to where the firemen, when they came to the house to see, at that was the fifth time, to see the light switch sparking, to see my sockets burn, burning, where I don't even have anything plugged in, into, into them, due to where, and PRC and G arriving, telling me, due to where, wow, until further notice, that, wow, I, I, I thanked them, I put a congratulations up there, due to where they told me to keep the, the cir, turn the circuit breakers off, due to where, what, how New Brunswick Police Department told the whole neighborhood, ooh, like, I'm crazy, I turned off the circuit break, the breakers, electricity for no, no reason. Wow, what I did was to stop, like I said, from where, where I was going, due to where, to stop it from burning down. Now, when it came back, due to where, okay, what the hell, where there was, they, did they do the paperwork correctly, like they said they were? No, I had trusted it, due to where, what, what, I, I never disrespected New Brunswick Fire Department, due to where, wow, and I find it very disrespectful, due to where, wow, you listen to the police, oh, I'm the one who do, who, what, OD'd off of oxycodone, due to where, it's not true, I, I proved that already, through my doctors, where, well, please, keep telling the lies, because you think you're hurting me. Honestly, you're, you're, you're helping me, because like I said, once the devil shows, due to where, and you wonder where all this bad weather is coming from, it's hate, too much hate in the air, peace and joy and love in the air, that's what we need, but like I said, getting back to it, wow, so, so the landlord hires a, a licensed electrician to come over and put tape, oh, on the, on the sockets, wow, did that do anything? Then, okay, the housing, the housing inspection come over, due to where, what, I'm showing out of all these sockets, due to where, wow, they're cracked, they're burnt, what, so all, all the landlord has to do, just show a piece of paper, that, what, everything was clear? But now, I know many of you are happy with the city, due to where, what, he, he said, I have to get out, I, 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 I have to get out, just for me, what, calling in for inspection, saving his house, and, and the neighbor's house downstairs, when you keep your stuff on, air conditioners on 24/7, due to where, something's wrong with the electrical system in there, yeah, now he said, I have to get out, yeah, I know many of you would be happy that I would be homeless, but like I said, when, when the devil comes out, please, keep telling everybody, like I said, you tell everybody one side of the story, why don't you tell them the other, other, other side? Oh, I put the pictures up on Facebook with the light switch sparking, I put how the wall, the wall was black, on the inside after you opened up each socket, but like I said, did I, and then the time that I really, what I was told, the New Brunswick Fire Department, including Captain I, 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 it was a disappointment, saying that, ooh, okay, yeah, yes, you would take matters seriously, and then what, I had to wait a whole nother week, and then due to where, the landlord, he doesn't live here, but like I said, I hope most of you are happy, due to where, what, yes, I will be homeless soon, due to where, what, just for me, call, calling in, I don't think New Brunswick Fire Department really took matters seriously, after being told with dealing with the police department, I didn't have any situation with majority of you, my situation with the police department, but it shows how the devil can spread, but, 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 but let it spread. Like, like I said, due to where, what, what happens, why do I always provide evidence of what I'm speaking? That's because the Lord knows that I'm telling the truth.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, Sedam Street. Thank you for the updates and for following up on some of the things I brought up at prior meetings. Can I ask for a summary of the impact of the MCM JIF dissolution plan on New Brunswick? Do we know what that's gonna mean for New Brunswick?
Mr. Jules, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Cradaville, we'll get the document when it's released to the public, and it's worth coming. I don't have the summary to give you now, I'm prepared to do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm very curious to see what the impact will be. For those who might not be familiar, the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund held a meeting on New Year's Eve, and at that meeting, they took actions that were not in accordance with the law. Minutes for that meeting, so first of all, the meeting was supposed to be recorded, or typically would be recorded, there was no recording made, because it was not noticed like the other meetings, I was not there, so I didn't get to make a recording. I've requested the minutes from that meeting, which were approved by the MCM JIF Board in April. In June, the JIF's attorney confirmed they had received my request, but they did not provide the minutes. I brought it up at this meeting two weeks ago, I brought it up at the JIF meeting yesterday, I was told that I will have the minutes either yesterday, or at the latest today, and I just checked my email, and I still haven't got them, so forgive me for being skeptical about the JIF's conduct here. They did something wrong, they chose not to recruit themselves doing something wrong, and the requirement is that they at least make minutes of the meeting, they approved those minutes, so that it's a public document, I've requested it through the proper channels, making an Oprah request, and I still don't have it. What am I to make of that? Does this agency have a problem with transparency? Why, I mean, Mr. Jules was there yesterday, he heard the council say I was gonna get these documents, why haven't I gotten the documents?
Ah, I don't know. You'd have to ask them.
I did, just yesterday.
Okay, you'd ask them, I guess.
Okay, well, maybe you could, could you ask?
Could I ask?
Yeah, could you ask? For the minutes from the meeting where the, the Department Banking Insurance said that the action was taken was not legal at that meeting. Why is it, why does that have to be a secret now, what action was taken? Can we get it? Can you get it?
I'm not, at this time, interested, I'm sure...
You're not interested?
I'm sure Mr. Jules will take care of it.
Okay, I know insurance is not the most interesting topic, but if it's gonna have an impact on New Brunswick, I care about it, and you should, too. Who's the lead on to the New Brunswick Parking Authority?
I...
Mr. Castaneda.
Yes, okay, so, Mr. Castaneda, do you have any info on this plan for a parking deck? Have you had any conversations with the board members, the executive director, about building a new parking deck?
Not at this time.
Okay. Can I ask, would you be able to get some information about what is planned and presented to us at a future meeting, 'cause...
I can see what I can do, and I'll take it from there.
Okay, 'cause you did vote to go ahead with this plan, and, you know, not knowing how much it's gonna cost, who's gonna pay, how big the deck's gonna be, or whether it's needed, is really, you know, leaves a lot of unanswered questions, so I hope that you can get us some information on what the Parking Authority has in mind, especially since they apparently are gonna have free rein to do whatever they want and not have to comply.
Well, there's still parameters, and I think it's unfair to say it's free rein. They have parameters that have to do with...
What, what parameters?
Again, I'll, I'll go back to that.
Okay, 'cause I was at the planning board on Monday, and I asked, you know, are there any parameters on their thing, and they said, no, they're exempt, they're gonna make them exempt under the plan that you just approved. So, again, I asked you not to, I think it's a mistake, but now that you have approved it, let's find out what we're in store for, and please share it with us, because, as you may know, the Parking Authority's got almost $200 million in debt, we have, you know, more public parking decks here than any other city, and I think there's a saying that, you know, no great city is known for an abundance of parking. We should be focused on community and getting things here that the people need, not catering to automobiles from out of town. Danielle brought up the fire at 111 Byard Street. Can anybody confirm that there was one, or what caused it? This is a, you know, a construction project, a developer promised to build a nice new building, and it's not working out yet? What's the status?
Mr. Jules, Mr. Valenti?
It was a fire, I think that was the question.
Sir, Council President, it was a fire, exterior fire, at 110...
So, 111, right?
Yeah.
Odd number, okay.
Valenti?
Yeah, we had a, to their inquiry from property, prior to that, I had visited our inspection department, they had already issued 11 summonses to that property for cleanup, post-fire. We were communicating with a construction company that had passed to maintain the property. That gentleman has confirmed, as we confirmed with our inspectors, they did clean up the area, they restored the fencing, and cleaned up all the debris around the property, they will be making weekly trips to the property to ensure that it will remain clean, they will also provide cell numbers if we or our inspectors observe anything, prior to the weeks, we can hold them directly, and they will respond immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you, if I may, just one more issue. The deployment, deployment of tear gas at the standoff on Harvey Street, I wanted to ask if the police could tell us about the use of tear gas, or whatever gas they used, and, you know, when was the last time that's happened in New Brunswick? I can't remember seeing that here.
Any comment, Captain?
You consult with us if you have any thoughts about it.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, April LaClaus, 143 Sedam Street, New Brunswick. So, one of the updates that you'd provided with regards to the request to pass a resolution around the Climate Superfund Act, you had, you know, stated that while you're personally supportive, you know, the city doesn't like to get involved in that thing, you know, Mr. Shami said it's the practice of the council to not, you know, weigh in on state issues like that. That seems a little inconsistent with, you know, past history, 'cause, you know, I know that this council did previously pass a resolution in support of driver's licenses for undocumented people, and I'm sure the council did that, because that has a lot of bearing on people in our community, it's important to the people that live here specifically, it impacts us, and I would argue that the parameters for that apply very much to the Climate Superfund Act as well. It impacts us, it's very important for our future as the community here in New Brunswick. This isn't just some random issue for someplace over there, this is something that's very relevant for us right here, so what is the difference? Why not take action on this one?
I just think it's different.
What's different about it?
It affects a lot more people within New Brunswick, specifically indirectly, as opposed to maybe indirectly.
Do you believe that climate change is real?
I have no comment right now.
Okay, well, that's concerning. Do the other members of the council, can you weigh in on if you think that climate change is real?
What I would say, like I did at the last council meeting, I already stated my, my support on that resolution, if, if something, you know, passing it, and I do believe that climate change is real.
I'm glad to hear that, the folks.
I second what Councilwoman asked the board to say.
Yes, I believe that climate change is real. Never said I didn't.
Yeah, so, you know, if, if the assumption, and it seems like most of the council members are, you know, of the belief that climate change is in fact real, you know, which I'm glad to hear that, at least most of you do believe that, then I think it should be pretty apparent that the impacts of increasingly frequent and powerful storms and extreme weather on our community is going to cost our community, and, you know, not just in the very direct ways that we unfortunately, sadly, are seeing in many other places where there's, you know, it's a cost in human life, although, you know, we're not exempt from that either, but just everyday, you know, costs of repairing the damages and trying to rebuild and move forward as a community, those are costs that our people are gonna take on. And, you know, by and large, the main contributors to climate change are the industries that are, you know, causing the, you know, the problem to get worse and worse, and the whole premise of the Climate Superfund Act is, people that are causing the problem, the entities causing the problem, should be at least partially responsible for helping to rebuild and fix the damages caused by that problem. So, I do think that it's extremely clearly related to our community right here. What do you think?
Well, as mentioned before, whether it's a federal, state, local municipalities that are close, or whatever, we don't wanna start getting into resolutions for a lot of different things like that.
Well, the council has previously done that, so I guess that brings me back to the first question of what is different, why not?
Exactly, directly or indirectly, that's what some people think.
I, I feel like we're kinda going in circles here.
Exactly.
I, I'm still not seeing why you feel that it is, you know, appropriate to pass resolutions in support of other state-level issues, but not take action on this issue.
We don't, we don't do an awful lot, and when we do it, it has to directly impact New Brunswick residents.
Right, I, I do think that the impacts are, are pretty clear. Related but separate topic, you know, we of course... A related but separate topic, um, you know, we of course have had a lot of storms recently with a lot of serious flooding, you know, of course, other towns in our state have been even, uh, you know, especially hard-hit, um, and thankfully, to my knowledge, you know, we haven't experienced any deaths from the flooding here, like has been the case elsewhere in the state, um, but I'm interested in the city's assessment on how well our infrastructure is holding up against the battery of storms that we're having, um, and any planned actions or, you know, seeing a need to improve our infrastructure.
Mr. Valenti, could you comment on the, uh, things like that? I know we've been.
Specifically, our infrastructure has dealt up, we can have legacy systems, um, typically, an inch an hour is about where we can tolerate, when we see an inch an hour rain, that's when you see the backups and secondary flooding, other than some other of the, the normal areas, but, uh, specifically, the current infrastructure is holding up, um, everything is a matter of capacity, uh, as I'm going to answer.
Thank you, thank you.
Council President, could Mr. Valenti also address the preparations that go into when we have a storm, because that, the cleaning of our streets and our preparations is a, is a driving factor as to, can you stress that, please, Tom?
Yes, uh, quite, uh, when we expect storms, uh, one of the ten, we do through a pre-certainment division of the public works, is we actively go, uh, and try to clean all the inlets, specifically, the low-lying inlets, there are several, uh, historic, uh, creeks or brooks that have been filling over time, one is Miller's Brook, which is the hollow or the low point between, excuse me, Paul Rosen and Jones Avenue, for example, Wild Brook, which is a low point between Lee and Ransum, so we attack, and we go to the low-point inlets first, because that's where the water will congeal, and then we work our way upstream, and our essence is to try to ensure that the storm inlets are clean, so that then they can receive stormwater, but that's one of the, uh, uh, things that we're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Carlos Ramirez, reported with New Brunswick Today, I just wanted to give some recommendations, I think my friend Charlie brought it up before, um, if we could get some type of monitor, maybe a projector, so we can see many presentations that, um, some people present, that are usually aimed at the council, but members of the public and other attendees can't view, um, if we don't wanna take the aesthetics away from the chambers, and maybe we can have some type of currents that come down, a projector mounted up there, um, that would be pretty cool for us to see some of the stuff that are presented to the board and many other people who use this room, um, the other thing, we used to have the, some type of monitor where we used to see the minutes for the speakers, and the public comments, the timer, um, I don't know what happened to it, can we bring that back?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
At some point, we used to have like a monitor in that table, back in the days, where you were able to see your time. Yeah, I saw a video of it, that was a long time ago, that's why I'm bringing it up, uh, I don't know, we can bring something like that back up, a little bit bigger, so we can see how much time we have left and reflect on our questioning, but I think if we had at some point, I don't know, we lost it, if we could bring that back?
It was down to recent, I used to have one, I think.
So, you're talking about a clock?
A clock.
Yes, uh, like, for example, the Department of Education projects their timer into their screen, I don't know if we could do that back, or we can bring maybe a laptop and just press it, we can see it a bigger screen, to reflect back on how we can better use our time, I think that'll be appreciated if we can do that, that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, uh, public? Seeing none? Turn?
Second?
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes, meeting adjourned.